So, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our May 2nd, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to remind everyone to please turn off your phones or put them on vibrate. If not, it's going to be very expensive buying lunch for everyone. Supervisor Bracker is in the building. He's a little bit under the weather, so he's going to be on the Zoom meeting with us, and I've been asked by staff to run the meeting today. So with that, at this time, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Jennifer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager.
We need to remove Action Item I, 10, and 11, and we'll bring those back when we're ready. Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Supervisor Malero.
Remove to adopt agenda, removing Item 10 and 11 and allowing Chair to DB8 as needed.
And there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and the amended agenda is adopted. We'll move on to call to the public, and the first speaker slit by half here is Ms. Julie Robinson.
Good morning, Chairman Bracker, and Vice Chair Ruiz, and Supervisor Malero. I'm delighted to be here to share a brief update about what is happening lately at the Tubac Presidio State Park and Museum. My name is Julie Robinson, and I'm the new park director. On April 15th, we were delighted to host the celebration of the signing of the Santa Cruz Valley National Heritage Area Management Plan by offering a family-free day with support from our sister organizations, the Santa Cruz Valley National Heritage Alliance, the Tubac Nature Center, and others. The Presidio offered a variety of demonstrations and activities, and our volunteers operated again. Arizona's first printing press for visitors gave a special viewing of our textiles, and partners provided archaeology and nature interpretations, and we had a children's arts and crafts table. On March 9th, we were delighted to also serve as another site for a celebration, this time for the Mexican consulate of Nogales, who were celebrating International Women's Day with a lecture and a concert. All of the activities were in Spanish, and I just want to note that we're recognizing that the Presidio real priority need to make our interpretation materials available in Spanish as part of support of visitorship and education mission. In March, the new deputy director of Arizona State Parks and Trails visited us, Sarah Weber and her team. We talked about resource needs, and with the support of my board president, Tom Walsh, he and I submitted a full budget to parks this year for funding considerations for 2026. Lastly, I want to show there's something extra special happening in the wings here. This coming up in two years is the national celebration of the 250th anniversary of the ANZA expedition, which departed Tubac to lead a group of 240 people, some families and children, to found San Francisco. There will be a lot of activities happening nationally, locally, and internationally, and we welcome the opportunity to partner with the county on marketing and promoting the events that are being planned. Lastly, we were delighted to see an increase in our school visitorship. We had seven school groups total, with 277 children visit us from January to now. If you haven't had a chance to visit the Presidio recently, I'd like to invite you and your staff to come. Just reach out to our office, and we'd be happy to make a tour available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and it is a jewel. I've been there. Next, Ms. Carolyn Schaefer.
Morning.
Morning.
How are you? I like to say that's a trick question these days. Thank you, and greetings all, everybody who was here today participating. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am Carolyn Schaefer. I'm here today as board president and mission coordinator for Patagonia Area Resource Alliance. In April of 2022, there was a presentation to the Board of Supervisors and staff about the strong nature-based restorative economy in Santa Cruz County. Santa Cruz County is part of the Sky Islands, which is recognized by scientists as one of the top five regions in the world, most in need of protection for species survival. I urge you to watch Para's film, Biodiversity in the Heart of the Sky Islands, which will be shown at the Nogales Cinema on May 15th, and you can watch a trailer of the movie on Para's website. The minerals located in the Patagonia Mountains will help humans move away from fossil fuels. But our priority must be to protect the biologically diverse region that is critical for species survival. There are other places to mine the minerals located in the Patagonia Mountains, and other ways to recirculate those minerals from existing sources. This biologically diverse ecosystem must be protected. The health and prosperity of our region are tied deeply to the well-being of the Patagonia Mountains and the Sonoyta Creek watershed, which are the source of our drinking water, clean air, and the biological wealth that drives our regional nature-based restorative economy. There must be sufficient oversight of proposed 21st century industrialized mining activity, as well as mining company accountability to the community in order to avoid short-sighted destruction of natural resources in pursuit of corporate profits. Para is actively engaged in protecting our natural resources by actions to hold agencies and mining companies to the highest science-based standards and to state statutes and rules. The handout you each have been given has information on the current actions by Para to protect our quality of life. These actions address two state water permits, the roads issue, and the proposed transmission line. And I'm not going to say anymore on that in the interest of staying within the three-minute marker. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today, and you all know where to reach me if you have more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Next, Mr. Brian Hernandez.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Brian Hernandez, and I'm with the Santa Cruz Soccer League. I would like to get an update as far as the last year, February of last year. The board approved a soccer field at Damon Park. I've been, for the last 15 months, I've been reaching out to Jesus Valdez to see where we at as far as that field, and we're still getting the same response since then. You guys are still looking for funds to add that field to Damon Park, to soccer field. It's been very challenging for our soccer community with the fields. Like I told you guys before, we don't have a full-size field that anyone can offer, not even the districts. We've been getting help with the district, Santa Cruz District, School District, with fields and City of Nogales, but like I mentioned, there's no full-size fields. So it's a big challenge for us, and the soccer community keeps growing and growing. So we are really requesting your help to see we can get those fields added to Damon Park.
And just to not carry on, if you stay till the end of the meeting, we have a study session that proposes what we're going to do with our sports facilities. So if you want to stay till the end of the meeting, it'll give you an update as to what we're doing. I'm clarifying. Is that okay?
That's okay.
Good.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public here wanting to address the board? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom world that wishes to address the board? And I don't see anybody rushing to either in Zoom world or here. So we will move on then to current activities. Board of Supervisors, Chairman Bracker, anything to report?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. I'd like to start off by offering my condolences to the family of John Grunemeyer. John, not a native of Santa Cruz Valley, but came here and adopted us, adopted District 35 School District, and did a lot of fundraisers to support scholarships and academia and different things in the school. Also, he was a huge member of the Rotary Club, and John's presence is going to be missed in our community. Secondly, I'd like to thank Sharon Erman and the Mingus Committee for pulling off another successful Mingus Festival on last Sunday at downtown in the Bank of Yuma Building. It was a really great event. A lot of people showed up. Had an opportunity to present to Valid Leadership Council. This is a valid leadership brings concerned citizens this year. They brought them to the three different port towns, Douglas, San Luis, and Nogales, to talk about what the economic impacts of international trade is, and then also, you know, from our perspective and from government, what the leader, what the challenges of leadership are of being on a U.S.-Mexican border. On that, I just got off a Zoom meeting with Senator Sinema. What everybody's talking about right now is the lifting of Title 42 on May 11th and the impacts that's going to have on the border. And this afternoon, the governor's office is also hosting a meeting for that. Finally, in closing, I'd like to thank Senator Sinema. She entered federal direct spending, has requested $50 million for the Ruby Road-Ria Rico Drive Interchange Project, including frontage road. She also put in an allocation for 1.2 million for the Animal Control Center for Santa Cruz County that we co-work with the city of Nogales with. And I'd like to thank Senator Kelly, who put in a request for $3.6 million for the Petrao Creek, where there's separated crossing. That's going to be a new bridge on Ruby Road going across the Petrao Creek and the grade separated for the Union Pacific Railroad there, so that should help congestion in that area. And that's what I have to report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Malero.
Morning, Mr. Vice Chair. Good morning. It's good to see our Sheriff Department in full force. Sheriff, welcome, and thank you for your service, gentlemen. First and foremost, I want to go ahead and send out my condolences to the Villa family. Mr. Mario Villa passed about a week, a week and a half ago. Mr. Mario Villa was an icon in Santa Cruz County. His store has been here for about 60 years, I believe, and it's an amazing family and amazing man. My deepest condolences and prayers go out to the family. I got to attend an FFA banquet at Ria Rico High School last week, and it's amazing what those kids are doing. It's really exciting to see our kids involved in agriculture, education. Their focus is on leadership, premier leadership, career development, and personal success. It's good to see these kids, they're bright eyes and future leaders of our community. It's exciting. Another group that was here, and I want to thank Alfredo Velazquez, the school superintendent, because he hosted student council kids here last Friday, and kids from throughout the county. It's exciting to see kids getting involved and coming into our building to see what the function of this building is, and thank you, Alfredo. And I also attended small counties last week along with CSA. Not a whole lot going on at the state right now. They are working behind closed doors on the budget, but not a whole lot went on this week, and that's all I have. One thing did happen is I believe that tamale bill was voted down, and that could have been a lot of trouble for our health department. We all like tamales, but under certain guidelines, right, Jeff? That's all I have, Mr. Reese.
I guess we can't buy tamales anymore. Quink, quink. Anyway, thank you, Supervisor Malero, and I know that they tried to override the veto, and it failed, and they had a few of the Democrats, not the leadership, that went to try to do that. A lot of things happening. We've almost finalized a meeting or summit for workforce development, the Ambos Nogales Workforce Development Program for May the 11th. We had a meeting with Mexican Council Moreno, with Ira Sema from the workforce, with the city, myself, Mr. Lucero, and we kind of discussed what it was that we are trying to accomplish and not be in competition with. We want to make sure that we have several partners at the table in our preliminary agenda, and I'll read it just so that people understand what it is that we're bringing in to the county on the 11th. I know that the Mexican consulate is having an education conference on the 12th that deals with mining only, and some of us on the group here have been invited just to kind of see what it is that they're proposing, because the end result is they want to build a binational Ambos Nogales Training Center. So, you know, we're, there's a lot of investment in Mexico, there's a lot of money available right now through their government, and we'll see what we can do to try to kind of maybe get on their coattails and see what we can do here at a local level with, you know, funding either from the state or the federal government. I think on May, what is it that we're having, our meeting with, is it Hale? From the...
May 30th.
May 30th. We're going to have a Zoom meeting with the representative for District 9, or Region 9, excuse me, on workforce and economic development. So we'll report back what we hear there. But anyway, just quickly, this is the pre-agenda program, so we have the EV industry presentation, Arizona EV manufacturing, battery manufacturers, charging stations. We have mining operations. South 32 will be presenting. We're still waiting to hear from the other two mines that we invited, Preport, MacMoran, and Asarco, but it looks like maybe Asarco is going to be the only one to participate. We have Paul Marsh, the state mining inspector, to come and talk about the certifications that are required to work in the mining industry. We have the University of Arizona, Justin Dutram, talking about Mexico and Latin America, international education. We have Misael Cabrera, the former ADEQ Director, who now is the Yovee Mining and Minerals Department. We have Mr. Greg Wilson, Dean of Applied Technologies from Pima College. Lisa Shagel, Director of Business Development and Engagement, will be here. Ms. Kathy Prater, the superintendent of our JTAD in Tucson. We're going to have lunch, and thanks to the sponsors, and I'll acknowledge them now, is South 32, Santa Cruz County Schools Office, and Unisource for their contributions, and the City of Nogales also contributed funding towards this event. Following lunch, we're going to have a presentation by our own superintendent, Alfredo Velazquez and Chris Young, on the robotics program and the Tecnologicas, and how that's been going to help our students really get into the STEM programs, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. Did I get that right? Thank you, Chris. And then after that, we're going to have employment services, and of course, Arizona Network. Ira Sema will do a presentation of what the program does here for us and get some ideas. We're also going to have adult education, thanks to Mr. Young. We have NOVI, which is, Carlos Velazquez is the president. We also have Chicanas por la Causa, and Trade in Motion that will be down here to present. So I know that the invitations have been sent already, and like I said before, for the public process and for transparency is, we're trying to make sure that we're able to create some sort of system for the jobs of tomorrow, and we're very well aware of this administration wanting to have, you know, I don't know, 50% of the vehicles by 2030 that are bought to be electric vehicles, but that also presents a challenge on infrastructure and many other things. Again, we did have that meeting, and I want to add my condolences to the Villa and the gentleman from Ria Rico who passed away. You know, any time that you're in a community and you help your community become better, those are people that are really missed at the end of the day. So I think that, oh, one more. I want to thank Alfredo and Chris for inviting me to the school safety little summit you had at the old courthouse. I wish there would have been more school board members in there to kind of get an idea of what's going on. I know that there were superintendents and other staff there to kind of get idea of what this organization does in helping identify funds for school safety, and now more than ever, when we see what happens across the country and what's happened in some of our schools, we want to make sure that we have those funds or those, that equipment that is necessary to protect the safety, not just of our precious students, but our staffs as well. Okay. We'll move on to Madam Manager.
Good morning again. Over the past two weeks, I also attended the small counties at CSA in Phoenix. I was a bystander in the budget meetings, so congratulations to Mercio and Jesus for completing our initial rounds of budget meetings, and thanks to all of our department heads and elected officials for their cooperation in that process. I also hosted our quarterly elected official department head meeting, as well as our quarterly employee committee meeting, and that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. We'll move on to Item E, Department Reports and Activities. One, Finance, Cash, and Investment and Expenditure and Revenue Reports. Mr. Chavez, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $20,713,802, with an investment amount of $14,620,000. The road fund has an overall balance of $1,389,545, with investment amount of just a little bit over $7,000. The flood control district fund has an overall balance of $1,422,057, with an investment amount of $271,000. The jail district has an overall balance of $4,729,173, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $52,386,806, with an investment amount of $17,796,732, for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $17,246,616.
Any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mo.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, shall I entertain a motion to recess and convene into the flood control district?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are now in the flood control district, and the first item is the Director's Project Report. Anji, thank you so much for sending the report ahead of time.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. For April, we did not have any precipitation, so we're below on rainfall. And moving on to our Efron Canyon project, we submitted our fourth quarterly report, and we are still waiting to hear back from DEM, see what on our last proposal was on our SOQ before we can go out to bit. The Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project, they've already had their first kickoff meeting, and the last I've heard, it looks like they did their flight, so that project is moving along pretty good. As far as the Nogales Wash Project goes, the ad, I don't know if you saw it in the paper, it came out in the paper, and the mail-out was already sent out to those people affected. And our other three projects, we didn't have much happening on those, and they stayed the same. As far as our flood hazard informations, we had 141. 19 were in the city, 114 in the county, and eight in the town of Patagonia. We had 18 floodplain use permits, 10 were in the county, eight in the city. We had four site reviews in Santa Cruz County only, and we did not have any drainage complaints.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions on the Director's Report? If not, anything from the City of Nogales?
I know, they did not reply. I know he sent me other information, but it wasn't for the board.
Anything from the town of Patagonia?
Yes, I submitted that with the report.
Great. Okay. We'll go on to Item Four, Public Comment. At this time, anybody?
Sorry, this is Bill O'Brien. I missed my cue for the monthly report from the town of Patagonia.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, thank you. I've been recently appointed the Town Engineer, and I also head the Flood and Flow Committee that meets once a month in Patagonia. And just a brief update, we're really thankful to be a key stakeholder in the regional flood plan study, and we participated in that April 19th meeting with county staff and their consultants. We're also working with South 32. They have some road plans for a bridge, and at some point, they've said that we would be able to help on the review of that. It's a county, definitely a county approval process, but we're very honored and pleased to be part of the conversation on that one. Another item was the University of Arizona Water Resource Research Center put on a workshop to talk about sustainability and water conservation, and that's a, it's really a benefit to us to have the academic side meet the practical side in our town meeting, and so we're grateful for that. The US Forest Service also meeting with them, working on watershed planning. And then there's a few other items that we discussed in the Flood and Flow Meeting, but just want to say thank you to the county for your support, especially the regional flood control project. That's a huge change for us. The floodplain's always been a big issue in Patagonia, and now, at least in this Phase One, we'll get it defined with modern modeling and modern, more recent topography. So that's it for our report. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions, Mr. O'Brien? If not, thank you, Bill. Welcome to the community, and hope to hear any reports from you in the coming months. We do it at the first meeting of the month when we have the flood control district, so that gives you 29 days or 30 days to get your report to us, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to public comments. Anyone in the audience or on Zoom world wishing to comment on the flood control district? Hearing none. Shall I entertain a motion to adjourn our flood control district and reconvene regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Can we do the executive sessions at the end? There's no lawyers, I mean, besides the two that are here that are going to be, okay. Okay, we'll move on to Item H, Jail District. Shall I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. We are now in the jail district. Item one, discussion, possible action to approve request for proposal B-0823-CO42 for the procurement of food services at the Santa Cruz County Adult and Juvenile Detention Services. Everything in order there?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Move to...
Shall I entertain a motion to adjourn jail district, reconvene regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now regular session. Let me get this Item Two out of the way before I go to Item One for the presentation, so I'm going to go on to Item Two. I'm going to go on to item two. Discussion Possible Action to Approve Proclamations Designating from the Sheriff's Office, and the first one is A, on May 7th, 2023 through May 13th, 2023, as National Correctional Officers' Week, and I would like to read the proclamation and move for its adoption upon the completion of me reading the proclamation. Whereas, in 1984, Ronald Reagan issued Proclamation 5187, National Correctional Officers' Week, and formally recognized the corrections profession and the difficult and at times dangerous nature of corrections work, and whereas honors the work of correction officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor, respect, and integrity, and whereas raises the awareness of the duties, hazards, and sacrifices made by correctional employees, and whereas in Santa Cruz County recognizes employees of the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office Adult Detention Center for their role in safeguarding the citizens of Santa Cruz County by providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County does here proclaim the week of May 7th, 2023 through May 13th, 2023, as National Correctional Officer Week, and all Santa Cruz County citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to the correctional employees of the detention center for the vital public service they provide. In witness thereof, we have here on to set our hand and cause the seal of Santa Cruz County to be affixed on the second day of May of 2023. Bruce Bracker, Chairman, Rudy Muletta, Member, Manfred Rees, Vice Chairman, move for its adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous correction. Thank you. We appreciate what you guys do for us, so. And so before you leave, we'll just get a quick photo here, so. Mr. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chairman, it is my honor to read the proclamation for National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day dated May 15th through May 21st, 2023, and I will move to approve it. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls is National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of Santa Cruz County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Santa Cruz County, and whereas, it is important that all citizens and understand, know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency, and that members of law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of law enforcement agencies of Santa Cruz County unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County call upon all citizens of the Santa Cruz County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2023 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observations in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We further call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County to observe May 15th, 2023 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to the community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all fallen heroes. In witness thereof, we have here on to set our hand and cause the seal of Santa Cruz County to affix this second day of May 2023. Bruce Bracker, Chairman, Manny Reese, Vice Chairman, and Rudy Muletta, Member.
And I will second your motion, Supervisor. Excuse me. Was that a second, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, so Bruce seconded it and Rudy moved for its adoption. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the proclamation is adopted. Thank you so much. You ready for the pictures? Emmanuel, can you raise the? Yeah, come up here and then we'll get a picture and then we'll, I know you guys are anxious to get to work. I see everybody looking at the wash.
How you doing? Thank you. Hey, how are you? Thank you.
Double ganger.
Again.
Somebody looked exactly like you.
Shut up. Thank you. Again, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Thank you. Sheriff, again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so.
Thanks again. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Right there, in between there. Come forward. Come this way. We're not all going to fit. Come on.
You have to be within the flags.
Come here. We need some more volunteers over here. Yeah, you're in the back. There's another tall guy. Over here, this tall guy over here. Come here, you're going to get right near the boards. So you're going to get right next to the flag there.
We got to be within the flag. I got to.
Professional photographer.
Are we in?
No, good? You want to move the flag a little that way? I do? So how's that, Shannon? Are we good?
Johnny, este por frente.
Ready? Ready. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Good seeing you, eh?
Good seeing you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Stay safe out there.
Thank you again. Good seeing you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get the screen down and then we'll start again. Can you bring the screen down again? Oh, did you turn it off too?
Hey, I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing with you, okay?
You never know for sure.
No, 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 no.
Oh, thank you. Being a big family. We're a big family. There was 11 of us and now there's only nine. Lot of grandchildren, great grandchildren. Okay, folks, we're good to go there, Emmanuel?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go then to item one, Update Presentation of Hermosa Project by South 32. Madam Manager, this is a thing that I have been constantly asking you and there's been some hair pulling and some other things I won't say, but so please.
Well, sir, yeah, so thank you for, you know, asking for this item. My apologies that it took so long. We were working closely with South 32 at a time that we've had a couple of packed agendas the last few weeks, as you all will remember, but Pat Reisner from South 32 is here along with Melanie Lawson, and they've provided a presentation which is uploaded on our website as well, and I'd just like to turn it over to Pat at this time, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Members of the Board. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate the opportunity. It has been a while since we've given an update in the public forum, so we're pleased to be here today. The update today I'll focus on, I think many of you are familiar, there's really two parts to the project. The first is the zinc development, which is in a final feasibility study, which we expect to make a decision on later this year. The update today will be focused a bit more on the second part of the development, which is the manganese deposit, because we've just finished the pre-feasibility study on that. We know a bit more about where we're headed on that one, and then I'll cover some information, other information on items that we know are important to the community and the public, so things like roads and workforce development. So I just want to talk a little bit about the manganese development first. We at Hermosa, the manganese resource, it's the only known resource of manganese in the U.S. that could produce a battery-grade product to provide a domestic supply chain for electric vehicle batteries. There's, all of the car companies and a significant number of others have a significant capital buildout of planned EV battery manufacturing facilities in the United States. Federal government's put a number of incentives in to incentivize domestic sourcing of raw materials. This is really the only option for manganese that goes into the cathode of every electric vehicle battery for domestic supply. We have finished the pre-feasibility study. It has confirmed our ability to produce high-quality battery-grade manganese. The photo you see on the right, we do have a pilot plant in a laboratory setting up and running that's taking portions of the manganese ore from Hermosa, actually running it through our planned processing design, and we actually are producing small volumes of battery-grade manganese. Right now, all of the battery-grade manganese in the world is produced in China, so that's essentially the first product outside of China. The reason we're doing that, we are in discussions with 11 different entities that have planned electric vehicle battery manufacturing facilities in the United States on the potential for domestic supply from Hermosa. To be able to advance those discussions, they need volumes of product to test and for us to work through, and we need to test our process to make sure we can produce an acceptable product. So that's being done at a pilot scale in a lab now, thus the product you see. We have signed our first memorandum of understanding with a potential future customer for battery-grade manganese for domestic supply in the U.S. and are working through, and hopefully we'll have several more of those over the next 12 months. The next steps on this, as we get into the latter half of this year and into next year, we are looking to develop a decline, essentially an angled tunnel to allow us to access the underground manganese resource to take a larger sample. As we move into next year, we will look to potentially scale up to a demonstration plant scale to produce larger volumes of product so that we can continue to progress those discussions with customers, hopefully to a binding offtake agreement at some point. This picture is why this project is important. South 32 is the largest producer of manganese ore in the world. We produce these materials in other places today. The challenge is we haven't mined manganese in the United States in more than 50 years, since the early 70s, or even in Canada for that matter, and the real challenge is the picture on the right. So it's all processed and refined in China. We can process and produce a final battery-grade product right here in Santa Cruz County. So this would essentially replace a Chinese supply chain for every, each one of you that buys an electric vehicle or the nine or 10 million that the government aims to put on the road by the 2030. As Supervisor Reese referred to earlier, this provides the opportunity for a domestic source for the manganese in those batteries. The federal government's put in a couple of policy incentives. The Defense Production Act was invoked by President Biden in March of last year to stimulate the domestic production of the five battery metals, of which manganese was one of those. That set aside over a billion dollars in funding to promote and stimulate projects like this, and then the infrastructure bill that Congress passed last year had $6 billion in critical mineral processing funding. All of this to try to create domestic supply, so we're not reliant on foreign supply chains as we build out our electric vehicle manufacturing capacity. Just want to provide an update on what's going on at our site. We have been in the midst of about an over $300 million early construction program at site and some other activities about to begin soon. I'll start with the water treatment plant that we're building, which is the photo on the bottom of the screen. Included that photo because it's a beautiful sunset. It actually looks more advanced than that. That project will be done in about five weeks' time. We will complete construction on that facility. There's a well field associated with that and we'll begin commissioning that facility in June. The next big milestone for us is we are commencing next week, doing the first earthworks to start the development of the exploration shafts. These are the 25-foot diameter, 2,800-feet-deep vertical shafts that we will start to develop to access the zinc resource underground. So in the second half of this year, we will be shaft sinking to access the zinc resource and hopefully driving a decline to access the manganese resource. So a significant ramp up in activity, obviously more employment on site. One of the things, we have planned this work with the ramp up in activity to make sure that we do continue to adhere to the trucking ordinance in the town of Patagonia, so the work's been planned and staged to make sure we can continue to remain in compliance with that as we move the development forward. One topic that's always of interest to the community and we've continued to discuss and seek feedback and engage on is roads and traffic, so a few updates wanted to include in the pack for this. We do have Harsaw Road where it comes on to our private property at site detoured. We're doing some planned upgrades that was also part of that early construction portion of the project to the road between now and the end of September. We're upgrading three creek crossings, staying out of the wash, widening the roads in areas. We do have detours in place. Let me see if I can point here. Well, we do have detours in place, so the green, the green area is the existing road, the blue area is the detour we have in place, which will remain in place till the end of September. We have signs on either end. We do have a dedicated bike lane for the detour. This has become a very, very popular area for gravel biking, so we've segregated and have a bike lane, and that'll be done around the end of September. The Cross Creek Connector is a road that we had planned to bypass the town of Patagonia to keep the traffic out of the town, something we've been working on for a while. The on-the-ground work for clearing on that road has begun this week. The county are reviewing plans for that road, and as soon as the plan review is done, we do plan to do a walk-through on the ground, first with county staff, but after that with the neighbors in the Red Rock Acres area and the local community to walk through to get a feel for what that would look like on the ground. There are some additional processes starting with that road. We filed for an encroachment permit with ADOT. to make sure we can continue to remain in compliance with that as we move the development forward. One topic that's always of interest to the community, and we've continued to discuss and seek feedback and engage on, is roads and traffic. So a few updates wanted to include in the pack for this. We do have Harsaw Road where it comes on to our private property at site detoured. We're doing some planned upgrades that was also part of that early construction portion of the project to the road between now and the end of September. We're upgrading three creek crossings, staying out of the wash, widening the roads in areas. We do have detours in place. Let me see if I can point here. But we do have detours in place. So the green, the green area is the existing road, the blue area is the detour we have in place, which will remain in place till the end of September. We have signs on either end. We do have a dedicated bike lane for the detour. This has become a very, very popular area for gravel biking, so we've segregated and have a bike lane. And that'll be done around the end of September. The Cross Creek Connector is a road that we had planned to bypass the town of Patagonia to keep the traffic out of the town, something we've been working on for a while. The on-the-ground work for clearing on that road has begun this week. The county are reviewing plans for that road, and as soon as the plan review is done, we do plan to do a walk-through on the ground, first with county staff, but after that with the neighbors in the Red Rock area, Acres area, and the local community to walk through to get a feel for what that would look like on the ground. There are some additional processes starting with that road. We filed for an encroachment permit with ADOT. Thatting does include a traffic study, and so that process is starting to commence, and then we will file for flood use permits in May. That is a long-term project. The completion, completion of that, of that road is planned for November of twenty twenty-four. Just to kind of remind everyone around routes, this is going back a few years, and we've presented this previously. We did a traffic route study over a couple of years back in the twenty twenty timeframe. This map shows you all of the routes we looked at as options. The
Excuse me, if you can stop for a second.
Hey, Bruce.
If you're monitoring the slides on this, you need to keep up with Mr. Reisner. We're still looking at the slide number one, and I think Mr. Reisner is already on slide nine.
Okay.
So, so Bruce, can you restate your question, because Mr. Reisner was talking and you were talking over him, so if you can come back and what is it that you want, Bruce?
Sure. There's a PowerPoint that we're supposed to be following along online. We're still on slide number one, and Mr. Reisner is on slide number nine.
So it's not moving on the
That's correct. So Emmanuel just needed to exit the slide if you could give us just a second.
I'll just give some background on the route study while we're doing that. So we, just to remind everyone, back in the sort of twenty twenty timeframe, we did a route study where we started with a much longer list of potential routes, but we looked at eight routes, evaluated them for various criteria, sought input from the community. The outcome of that study was that the short-term preferred route in and out of sight was Harsaw Road to the Cross Creek Connector, thus the construction I just referred to. But the long-term route for the majority of the life of the production phase of the operation would be a road north out of the property through the Flux Canyon area or in that vicinity, connecting with Highway eighty-two on the other side, on the Nogales side of Patagonia. And I do, when we get the slides back up, I do want to provide an update on that. We had proposed a road or a route out Flux Canyon initially, as that long-term route was selected as the preferred option. After a lot of engagement and feedback, particularly from those that lived in the Flux Canyon area, we've made some changes. So the original route largely, not entirely, but
Santa Cruz County is on mute.
You said you're, you said people, they're working on trying to get the slides reestablished, Bruce. Can you see the slides now, Bruce?
Yes, and now I can hear you also.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, Pat.
Okay. Looks like you might have to advance them for me now. Yeah. So Patagonia in the upper right corner of the, of the blue line, which is eighty-two. These are the eight routes we looked at as part of that study. The, the Taylor-Harsaw Road to Cross Creek Connector is the short-term option, and then the area out Flux Canyon is our long-term preferred option. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So this shows you the Flux Canyon area. The light blue line there is the existing Flux Canyon Road, and it ends there at our site. That was the approximate original option that we've looked at. A lot of feedback from Flux Canyon and other residents, we've, as a result of that feedback and community input with concerns for that route, we have come up with an alternate route that we're proposing now, which we're seeking feedback from the public on. It's the purple line that you see that follows the Kinder Morgan Gas Line, which is the yellow dash line there. It only uses the existing Flux Canyon Road at the top end, closest to our site. And as you come back towards eighty-two, which on this slide, eighty-two is the white dash-dot line there on the, on the left, as it comes back, comes back towards eighty-two, it pretty much follows the Kinder Morgan Gas Line that's there today. So we're calling this the Gas Line Route and follows the Kinder Morgan Gas Line Route until it intersects eighty-two. So this route would intersect Highway eighty-two much closer to Nogales and the airport area than the original Flux Canyon Road, which was closer to Patagonia. So we've made this change in response to community input and concerns. One of the things we are doing is seeking feedback on that route and getting people to provide us their thoughts. There are several ways to do that. You can stop by our Patagonia office. We've got this feedback open for the next four weeks. We have maps of both routes available. We also have a short online survey that people can take, or you can email to our askhermosa@souththirtytwo.net email address. And we've included both the update on the Cross Creek Connector work, as well as this route in our newsletter that went out, I think, last week. Last update I'll provide as we move forward, obviously with some of the construction starting and us getting closer to making final decisions, starting to plan for workforce development is becoming a really important priority. I'll give a brief sort of overview on what some of the numbers look like and how we're thinking about it. As I mentioned, we're in a final feasibility study on the zinc side, and that will be concluded. And we'll, that's, that's pretty much an internal process to allow the South Thirty-Two Board of Directors to make a final decision. That'll conclude at some point later this year. Once we get to the end of that, we have to move forward in earnest with looking at how we grow workforce. And so there's a number of things that are priorities for us as we step through that. One of them is prioritizing local hiring. We've committed to the community, to the county and others, that we want to maximize employment for those that live in the county today. For us to be able to do that, we've got to have a comprehensive, coordinated workforce development plan. As part of our community advisory panel, we've already done some work with some workforce development experts to understand how we can look at transferable skills, opportunities in the county today. Partnering with a number of the Santa Cruz County-based education institutions, Mr. Velazquez and Mr. Young, we really appreciate the partnerships with the schools, the robotics program, Techno La Chica's that was referenced earlier. It's going to be really important that we partner and collaborate on STEM programs locally, because we have a lot of engineering, science-based roles, where we want to start to develop the workforce of the future here in Santa Cruz County. The big part of this, we'll be working with community colleges and other institutions locally on how we train the trades and the operators and the maintainers in the workforce and try to maximize local content in that workforce. I'll show you in a minute the significance of that challenge and what we want to do there. But there's going to be a lot of work kickoff to start to take this forward. We also want to explore regional partnerships. I think that was referred to earlier. As we stand up programs to grow, train and grow a local workforce for Hermosa, we want to look at the broader needs, the broader economic development needs and the regional needs for skills. It's the right time to address all of that at one time. This kind of gives you an idea. We, we are at peak operations. If you look at the manganese and the zinc together, we will have eight to nine hundred direct South Thirty-Two employees in the county. When you look at indirect jobs and induced jobs, that, that number grows to about twenty-four hundred, but direct employed in mining, it's eight to nine hundred. This table gives you an idea of, just for the zinc development, which is six hundred and eighty odd of those, what the distribution of roles is. So, you know, we've got to train just for the zinc development upwards of five hundred operators and maintainers. Processing, we've got admin and supply. So there's got to be plans around every one of those classes of roles and the skills that are needed and how we develop those locally. We do believe long-term, we can have a greater than eighty percent of the workforce are people that come from right here in Santa Cruz County. So next steps, it's going to be a big effort. We need to collaborate and involve everyone that does this work, so we are looking at developing a countywide task force. We're going to have a person dedicated in our team focused solely on working with regional institutions and stakeholders to deliver this program. That will be all they do full-time with the aim to maximize that local workforce. Talked about the need to look at cross-industry training so that we can support other, other needs in the region. And then if we get into the tactics, we're actually creating role profiles, training needs, and competency-based training for, you know, for upwards of eight hundred roles as, as we speak. And I will pause there. If you want more information, we have a number of options. We have a dedicated website for Hermosa now, souththirtytwohermosa.com. We are on social media now. We have a Facebook page. I believe we've launched LinkedIn and Twitter as well now, focused on Hermosa. If you want to get on our newsletter mailing list, you can text Hermosa to the number there on the screen, and we always have the email addresses for questions and careers. With that, Mr. Chairman, that'll conclude my presentation.
Great. Thank you, Pat. I appreciate the update. As you know, I think the last time you and I met was back in October, and I had a lot of specific questions about workforce development, because I understand that the magnitude of this project has the opportunity to create a lot of good-paying jobs, which lift people up and allow them to be able to own their own homes, raise their families, be able to go out to have dinner locally or take vacations, whatever they choose to do. So thank you for that. I also appreciated the little update, which is what you gave us here, some other stuff, but, but I think I know I was talking to Melanie, and one of the things that I said is when you look at your Santa Cruz County Advisory Panel, I mean, I couldn't find a link. It takes a while to explore your website to be able to do that, and I finally found a few meetings, and I think the last one is January the ninth, I think, but it said it was posted on April twenty-eighth. But I did find a document that was created, and, and, and I'll step back a little bit just so that the public understands, back in the tenth of November of twenty twenty, we signed a memorandum of understanding between the mine and Santa Cruz County. And I think that was a document I was looking for to have your committee come and present to us, which I was later told that, that that wasn't going to happen. And then as I started reading, I realized that the reason you guys created it was because of the open meeting law, that if we appointed people, then it would have to be open to a much broader audience than you currently have. So it's your, your committee and stuff, and, and I read what Dr. Angela Donaldson did with your, with your your report, which was from twenty twenty-one. There isn't another one that I'm aware of. And then I was looking through the whole report and your commitment to working with local, whether it's the college, whether it's the classrooms for workforce development, even some of your appendixes show the, you know, the, the work, what's needed, what's not there, how, how we can do that. And then I found a, a table of membership, and I was looking at that, and I don't think it's up to date, because I see two of the members there have since passed, and they were good friends of mine. And that was Adelmo Sandoval and Mr. Neil Zerman. So I don't know if there's a new list on there, and I don't know who's on there. Can you, do you have the new names on there by any chance, Melanie? Yeah, this was, this was
It was an end-of-year report at the end of two thousand twenty-one. We had some changes and haven't done an end-of-year report for two thousand twenty-two, but we can certainly provide that, and I think we talked this morning, we probably provide some links to make that information more accessible for you.
And, and one of the things, because I think at the, the last meeting that you guys had, one of the members that was absent, Mr. Fanning. And then you have Ms. Collier, and then you have Dr. Verona, which the three are members of the Santa Cruz County Provisional Community College District. And when you look at your document about working with, I'm just saying it's probably nothing wrong, but I just want to make sure that whatever you guys do, it doesn't become an issue at the end. You know, I know that anywhere we go, that a majority of us, we always post to make sure just, just a heads up, not that there may be nothing wrong with it, but just because of what your document says, you know, at some time, maybe the college will have to take up some, some sort of workforce development. And that would be, in my estimation, an unfair whatever up, up there, but, but, I mean, the documents that you have produced here that goes with what the purpose of the committee is, I commend you. I think that they were very well researched. It defines the duties of the people that you have selected to be on, on those committees. And I know that you have both people that are for and against. And that must be a lot of fun at your meetings when you're trying to deal with issues. And I know that most of what I have read in your minutes, I think, probably has dealt more with water issues. And I think that many on those committees will probably become water experts after they're done with, with their time on the committee and a few little bit of transportation. But if, if you could, put a direct link so that the public can access them, then it's a little bit better as far as I'm concerned. But you know, Jennifer, thank you. I'm glad we have this MOU. You know, I know that said quarterly there, so maybe if there's other opportunities when you hear something new that you can come and address the board. Because I think it's important that the community understand what is occurring and how we're trying to work together to create those benefits. I mean, you know, there's always a tax on how, you know, it's just corporate, corporate profit, but I, I choose to look at it as opportunities to have some of those investments done locally. Through either creating a trading center. I know you're looking at creating some, some operating buildings locally that have an impact on our, on our taxes and, and and the training, and I'm glad that you've reached out to, to the school districts and to the community college, and I know our workforce is, is always available too, and, and I'm hoping that after you get the opportunity to present and you see what the value is of trying to make this really, really a very regional opportunity to create wealth for the citizens of Santa Cruz County and Sonora, because I know the Sonoran government is, is very on board, looking at opportunities, and like the governor has toured your facilities, and, you know, he's looking for ways to invest, and I know that they're looking at not just EVs or solar or green energies, but they're also looking at chip manufacturing. So there's a lot of things going on. So you know, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Supervisor Malera, you have anything to add?
I, I, thank you. I will be brief. First and foremost, Pat, thank you for your presentation and bringing us up to date. I'm personally really excited about our partnership. Three key items come to mind to me. One has already been touched on thoroughly, workforce development. Secondly, housing, I think, is going to be huge, because we're going to have a lot of people working at your facilities. So we're going to need to house those people. And lastly, I think our, our spending limitations here at Santa Cruz County is going to be an issue we're going to need to tackle, and I think you and staff are, are meeting, and, and I thank you for that. It's, it's exciting. It's exciting for our community. It's exciting for opportunities for our, our youth and, and just employment in general. It's someone, I'm going to quote a friend of mine that said, it, it's like having the Super Bowl come into town. You know, it's, it's big. It's really big, you know. It's, it's to that capacity. So again, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and your partnership. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, anything to add?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairperson Reese.
Well, great. Thank you, Pat, and I think, you know, my colleague makes very valid points on housing and the expenditure limit, some of the things that we have to work on to present to the community, and I do want to thank you for assisting our staff and being able to try to find a way to get this issue resolved and, and move it forward. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it, Pat.
All right. Thank you.
You guys, thank you for coming. Have a good one. Take care. Okay. Okay, let's go. Let me change glasses. I can't read. We'll go to item number three, and that is discussion that is discussion, possible action for authorization to reclassify and fill vacant bookkeeper position to accountant position. Is that?
It's budgeted, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item four, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill vacancies for the county attorney's office. One is a legal assistant. The other is intelligent analyst, HIDA funded, and a detective HIDA funded. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Hear a second?
Second, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Are they all budgeted items?
Yes. Yes, sir, they are. And two of them are grant funded.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve contractor agreement with Sigama Consulting LLC for services related to the robotic summer camps at local schools in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Everything in order?
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion, possible action to approve state fill the gap FTG grant application for fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's from the courts. Everything good?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, discussion, possible action, approve FY twenty-two Operation Stone Garden OPSG grant awards with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security effective April first, twenty twenty-three through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and ratify authorized signature for. And who's the author? Is it the sheriff? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve items A and B.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that, Mr. Malera. Didn't see this. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve amendment number twenty twenty-three dash ninety of contract number twenty twenty-three, four oh five B, zero zero six with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for an increase in federal funds to purchase car seats in the amount of two thousand dollars. Everything in order there? Chair, entertain a motion?
To approve.
Hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Discussion, possible action to approve sole source contract with Mutual Link, Inc. for a school safety communication platform effective May second, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Go ahead, Mr.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I have a second under discussion.
Go ahead.
Do we have a consultant from the MultiLink in, in the audience?
Please, there is.
Can you talk, can you just talk, can you brief the public on what this is for a minute?
He's, he's coming to the podium, Bruce.
Morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, members of the board, Sheriff Hathaway, Chief Deputy Castillo, thank you for your time. I'm Mark Taylor with Mutual Link. This is a state-funded grant that was provided to fourteen, or fifteen counties within the state. It is being provided through June of twenty twenty-five, and it provides all schools and all law enforcement partners with this interoperability technology that allows schools to communicate with nine-one-one directly, providing them situational awareness in case of an emergency. And it's all paid for and fully funded. So, we are active and live in nine counties right now. Santa Cruz will be the tenth county throughout the state, which will allow them to communicate then with other agencies throughout the state as well. So, providing that, that gap and bridging the proprietary technology nature of all the police radios and, and school radios as well.
Correct. And just a follow-up question. I mean, thank you so much, and it's grant funded. What happens after twenty twenty-five?
So, we are working right now with the Arizona Sheriff's Association to get a state line item on the budget. And once that happens, we'll hopefully get that funded in perpetuity. If not, it is a software to service. We would just come in and say, Mutual Link, we no longer have it in the budget. We would come out and pull the equipment out, and the contract would be, would be null and void.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I will say this, and I know it's probably because of, that's why it's considered a sole source, because you're the only ones that have it. But I, I think there has to be an effort made so that once it's in place, it continues. You don't want to create or give school districts or principals or teachers or students a false sense of security if we can't continue to fund. And I applaud you, and I'm glad that the Sheriff's Association is moving ahead with this. But, you know, we need to make sure that it continues in place so that the personnel at the school and students feel safe.
Correct. And the, the more expensive part is the hardware that is all being provided. So, the software after that, for the licensing is very, very relatively inexpensive. So, it is something that we can, but again, we're working at it, on it as a line item on the state budget.
Right. And if, and if not, I would encourage you to reach out to the school districts that are going to be participating to see what the amount of the, or the, whatever you pay for the rights to the software.
Correct. I, I met Mr. Young earlier today, so we will be following up with him as well to, to move forward. So.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Bruce?
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, sir, for explaining what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Moletta. Anything to add?
Just thank you.
And Bill, you were going to say something?
Um, yes, I just wanted to flag for. I just wanted to flag for the board that we researched this in our office. Mutual Link has a sole source agreement with numerous other counties in the state. So, they really are the only source on this.
Yeah, I, I know. We go through that through the school district, too. Great. Good. Thank you. So, there is a motion and a second. If there is no further discussion or comments, all in favor signify.
Aye.
Saying aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. Items ten and eleven removed to the future meeting. Item twelve, discussion, possible action to approve professional services agreement with Knowledge Capital Alliance for the Health Emergency Tabletop Exercise effective May second, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. What is this, Jeff? Oh, he's gone, I think. Oh, there he is.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of board. This is a funding source that we can meet one of our delegated authorities underneath that Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. They will provide the exercise, the trainers, all that stuff for our tabletop.
Perfect.
And it is grant funded.
I'm glad it's exercise, so we'll all be fit, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen, discussion, possible action to approve professional services contract with Donaldson Consulting LLC for community planning and revenue development services effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I know we had a ten thirty-one, but we're just going to do all that. The ten thirty was the study session that you had. So, we'll just get over it. We'll start a little late. I don't think that'll affect anything, will it? Good. We'll go on to item fourteen, discussion, possible action to approve authorization for services number five with CNS Engineering for Construction Management Service for the Nogales International Airport Airfield Electrical Upgrades Construction Project in the amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Everything good to go?
Move to approve.
Mary, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Under discussion.
Thank you, Mary.
We're, we're going to have the best airport ever, man.
[laughing]
Great. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item fifteen, discussion, possible action to approve notice of award and authorized execution of contract pursuant to bid number B dash zero one dash twenty-three dash C O zero three to PaveX Corporation for the Nogales International Airport Airfield Electrical Upgrades Construction Project in the amount of one million six hundred and one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen, discussion, possible action to approve professional services contract with CMG Drainage Engineering, Inc. for as-needed floodplain and row revenue and management services in the amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand per six months. Everything good to go?
Move to approve.
Hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item seventeen, discussion, possible action to approve professional services agreement with Solis Engineering Company for as-needed development review for civil and traffic engineering related to South Thirty-two AMI for a period of up to nine months. And you have six-month periods? That's, doesn't make sense. So.
Nine-six month period.
So, it's nine-six months. Well, because you put it in parentheses, so to me, it means nine and six.
Nine periods of six months.
Okay, that would have been probably easier. So, you have, okay, so you have nine periods of six months.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I read it wrong. Oh, well. We move on. Eight, number eighteen, discussion, possible action to approve award of contract to Inova Engineering LLC pursuant to bid number B dash four dash twenty-three dash C O twenty-eight for furnishing and delivering aggregate cover chip material in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Everything in order? Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There were no opposed. So, item nineteen, discussion, possible action to approve and ratify agreement with ADT for fire alarm inspection and remediation at the Santa Cruz County Adult Juvenile Detention Center and Courthouse in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Item twenty, discussion, possible action to approve reprogramming request for HIDA grant number HT twenty-three dash two nine five one for fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-five thousand and ratify the authorized signature, which would be the county attorney. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Hear a second? Discussion, hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-one, discussion, possible action to approve bond for duplicate warrant number two dash one 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 six four eight in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars dated four eighteen to twenty-three payable to Enrique R. Gonzalez. Everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, yes, everything is in order.
I heard. Move to approve by the chairman. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-two, discussion and possible action on the recommendation to approve of liquor license application for Maria's Grill in Rio Rico. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
Yes, sir. Everything is in order.
Chair, entertain a motion?
Approve.
Hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-three, discussion, possible action to approve certificates of removal and abatement of taxes and/or penalties A through, uh, is it I?
L.
No, L. And I know there was a gentleman that had some concerns. Is there anyone here from the treasurer's office or maybe the attorney's office that can explain this? What, what the abatements are about? I know that the, each certificate that is signed by the board has a reason. And I know that there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. There's twelve of them. When we sign those, do they become a public document, assuming we pay, we approve? And then, so the public would be free to look at the, at those certificates. And I, I think, I think one of the things is that they were asking, and I never thought about it, said, you know, maybe there should be a little more underneath there just to give the public an idea of, of what it is we're abating and why. Because I know they're saying, you know, any public agenda needs to at least have sufficient information to be able to let the public know what we're doing. So, I don't know if we can do that. Sure we can, but, or, or even under the caption where we're doing that, say it's because of this, this, and this. Right? Can that be done?
We can. And the backup information, it'll give the, the reason why. I'm just having trouble having the computer connect. But they all could be for different reasons, different reasons of the abatement.
Okay. Yeah, but, but I guess.
So, like in, in A, the parcel's owned by the United States of America. They don't pay taxes. That's what we get the pilt for. So, again, there's just different tax reasons. So, it's all in our backup as well. But we can definitely work with the treasurer's office to, you know, make the agenda clear.
So, you know, sometimes you can't come to the meeting, but if you see the agenda, it gives you an idea of.
Right. B, the parcel no longer exists.
Okay.
So, and again, this is all in our backup that's available to the public usually by Friday before the meeting.
So, they can go on the website and look at the agendas?
That's correct.
Okay. So, well, we should put a little note, and maybe it is on there, because.
Move to approve.
Hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, great. Does that take care of it? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-four, tax valuation adjustments. The assessor's office. Miguelito, if you can come up and explain what that is, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Good morning to the public. The first one is one oh one, parcel one oh one, twenty-five, one oh three. What happened in this one is it was a sale, and, and the clerical department made a mistake, and they put, reclassified the property to be like a non-primary residence, meaning they don't receive a state aid education discount from the state. If it's only occupied, that's when they receive the, the discount. In this case, it was found out when the taxpayers show up, and they went for, because the sale was done in two thousand and twenty. So, we went back for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's the reason why, and the explanation shows the classification from four oh one, that is secondary residence or non-primary residence to primary residence. That's why it's, we're making that adjustment. The values remain the same. The only difference is that it's going to reflect on the tax bill.
And that's for A through C, and then D through F?
That's correct, Mr. Many Ries.
Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. So, this is a similar situation?
Uh, the second one, we have this famous called B rule, that it was built a detached garage on the property. But, you know, I don't want to blame the, the system. It's a human error of the system. Sometimes we make the change, and it's like a new addition to the property. It needs to, if increased more than fifteen percent, the full cash value from the previous year is by statute. We need to make a B rule on the, applying. They mean the limited property value is the one is commending for the property taxes right now. So, we need to change the, we put in a, in a B rule, but it remained for three consecutive years. So, actually, it's only one for when the addition was done for that tax year. Right now, we put a data for two thousand and twenty-four tax year. So, remain for two extra years. So, the taxpayers show up, and we find out it was a mistake. So, we need to put it at the B rule when it was done for two thousand and twenty. And remain this for twenty-one and twenty-two is going to be applied only the limited property value. It's going to increase only five percent if there's no addition or deletion. That's why we did a proposed correction on this.
Perfect. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item number twenty-five, approval of minutes. Madam Clerk, everybody signed off on them?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Everyone signed off. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the minutes of four-eighteen twenty-twenty-three. There's a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-six, demands. Mr. Miletta.
Mr. Chair, move to approve, uh, demands totaling one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-three cents, of which five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents are from the general fund.
Second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So let's go into, uh, let's take a five-minute break and then we'll start our study session. And then we'll finish our executive session. So eleven oh five, we'll call it back to order.
John, bring it for me if I forget something. So it's, all it is is you want to give information of what we, what we're doing. You have it on, but just between me and you, what we're doing, to what levels we're doing at these places. And then you could, you know, and then the second one would be, um, at the end would be, you wanted, you have this information, so now that we we can start making decisions on the next phases.
Go ahead and, uh, call this meeting back to order. And Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn our regular session inconvenient to the study session. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. So item one, county parks, operation and maintenance. Mr. Valdez.
Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, uh, Maritza is gonna give the, the presentation, but I just wanted to say a few words before she starts. What we're trying to do is give you an idea of, of our main, level of maintenance that we're doing on parks. Uh, we're gonna look at some of the parks and some of the you know, the demand and staffing levels and, and utility usage. Um, and once she presents that, at the end, we could talk about what the next phase is of, and how we want to proceed with fields, uh, master plans, everything's for discussion, but I just wanted you guys to have a, a snapshot of what we're doing and we've been doing for the past, you know, five, six years.
Great, thank you. Maritza. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and those present. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly present data obtained from this face of the park feasible, from this phase of the park feasibility study, which will include park demographics, facility amenities, park and trail us, utilization, and an estimated cost to maintain. The county's park inventory includes seven parks and five trails which we will, which will come up later in this presentation. This table provides a snapshot of the park's demographics. We have all the parks listed, their location, level of service, and other demographics. Please note that Sonoyta Baseball Field is maintained by Santa Cruz County, therefore for that purpose is included as part of this study. So let's dive into what these parks have to offer. Each park has at least one unique identifier. You have the listed amenities. Um, the Ramala Calabasas Park can be reserved for private use at a rate of two hundred dollars. Cost includes fifty non-refundable registration, fifty dollars for a non-refundable registration fee and a hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, I, I still, I think we're having problems with the presentation when it comes to Zoom. Sorry.
It's okay.
Similar to what happened with the first.
There are not that many slides. Emmanuel, if you want to go ahead and just switch them for me, it makes it easier.
Can you see it, Bruce?
Yes, now I can see it.
Thanks, great. Okay, Maritza.
So going back into diving into these parks and what they have to offer, you have a list of the amenities and I'd like to add the Calabasas Park can be reserved for private use at a rate of two hundred dollars. The cost includes a fifty-dollar non-refundable registration fee and a hundred and fifty cleaning security deposit, which if it's left as found, you, they can get back. Um, Damon Park is popular for its field lights, which are powered upon request at a rate of five dollars per hour. Ron Morris Park has its very own doggy park, which we're very proud of. Two Back Community Facility offers pickleball courts. Chula Vista Park is the only county neighborhood park. And not only is Sonoyta Baseball Field distinctively located within the fairgrounds, but I believe to the best of my ability that it's the only baseball field in Sonoyta. And it was very exciting to actually go out there. I didn't know it existed. And when I went, they were actually hosting a Little League baseball game. So, very well used. Manuel Tapia Trail is fully equipped with fitness equipment and picnic areas. Utilization. It's challenging to keep accurate track of park and trail use. It was a lengthy process to make several visits to parks and trails at different times of the day to conduct count for an estimated daily and weekend use. Most of these visits took place prior to warmer weather, therefore you can safely forecast the estimated use to at least double, which is on the left part, the left chart, I'm sorry, for current estimated use. Damon Field Lights. This actually shows the number of hours the lights were powered on during those months in compliance with requests and payments. Most of the requests were Monday through Friday, and the most popular hours were five to seven, six to eight, or even four to nine. Um, mind you, I must note that these are baseball fields that are well lit, however, they're being used for soccer practice and football practice. That was absurd, uh, I observed that while I was out there. Calabasas Park Ramala Reservations demonstrates a full year's request with February and March being the peak months with seven requests each. A couple of parks have reported approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty visitors on special events such as Calabasas on Easter Sunday and Ron Morris Park during watch hockey event, which is an annual event held in March. Estimated cost breakdown. Budget reporting doesn't specifically identify all the expenditures by park. So with the exception of utilities, which we were able to apply, we were able to apply accordingly based on addresses, all other calculations are based on demand. So a maintenance need methodology was applied for this. Damon Park was identified as the most demanding in terms of maintenance. Therefore, the breakdown applied is as follows. Damon fifty percent, Calabasas twenty percent, Ron Morris ten percent, with the remaining four parks at five percent each. It's evident that the three highest expenses include salaries, utilities, and fuel. The salaries total is based on a three point five full-time equivalency. Utilities include water, electric, and electricity where applicable. The fuel purchased is for tractors, cedars, mowers, gators, the actual trucks to commute to and from the parks, a dump truck, and five weed eaters. So the estimated cost to maintain the seven parks was approximately two hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-eight per year. Santa Cruz County has contracted out for vegetation control along the five trails that we have. The amounts shown on this slide are from last year, which was considered a very wet year. So the need for vegetation control was higher, averaging five to six service visits per trail. So the amounts there reflect five to six service visits each. Totalling three hundred thirty-two, seven hundred ninety-four, and seventy-nine cents.
We also built a walking trail in Kino Springs, didn't we?
Mr. Chair.
That's being underutilized?
Um, yeah, and that doesn't demand as much as, uh, of the maintenance because of the old golf course and some of the vegetation has been removed, so.
But it's still part of our trail.
And I apologize for not including it. So this concludes my brief report on my informational presentation piece of it. I look forward to continuing working on this project as per your direction on next steps and or phases. And I'd like to entertain any questions that you might have at this time.
Oh, any questions, comments? Bruce, anything to add?
Um, I have, I don't have questions at this time. I'm gonna have to take this and read it a little bit and I'll get back.
Supervisor Miletta.
I, I thank you for your presentation, first of all. I just like to see us come up with a master plan. Especially with, uh, what's going on with the mine. See what our options are. Look into possible grants, maybe get ourselves, uh, hire a grant writer just to focus on, on parks. And, and because with, with the mine going full board, I think we will probably have funding. Our, our, our community's probably gonna explode too as well, so we will need more facilities. I'd like, you know, I'd like to really focus on smart growth with our, uh, facilities. Soccer obviously is, is, uh, really hurting for fields. We will need more, more facilities in general, in general. But thank you, thank you for your, your plan.
Thank you.
So I guess I, my comment will go along the lines that Supervisor Miletta talked about as a, a, a master development plan with, uh, probably estimated costs for what we would need to do. I know that there was a grant out there and I don't know if we've used it or not, remember? We were applying for some grant and we made, you know, one soccer field there at, at, uh, it was three, two years ago, three years ago. So anyway, kind of bring that into the fold. But we also got the land out there at Calabasas Park from the city, which one of their caveats was with the, the next ten years, we needed to build some soccer facilities, but, but I would, I, I would argue that there's probably opportunities to do more than just soccer. When you look at Little League down here, I mean, it's exploded, so I don't see, I think there's enough room out there to, to build like a building in the middle with like four baseball diamonds so that they could take it, so you could have four games going on at once instead of how we do it now, you know, one game at a time and, and do that. But also the possibility of the, the soccer fields, but until we have that, that plan in place or a capital improvement for parks and stuff, we really don't know what it is that we're looking for. And at that point, we could try to identify whatever funds available or would be available to, 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 uh, to build them and also be able to maintain them, because it's not just having the facilities, it's how do you maintain it? And when you look at what the costs are associated now, I mean, you know, especially with fields, you have to irrigate or water the grass and, you know, unless you go to a, a specialized, uh, uh, turf. And, uh, you know, I was talking to somebody who was telling me about, I didn't know there were different types of turfs. But one of the ones that was, that was mentioned to me was like made out of coconut tusks. And it's probably safer than the other, the other, uh, artificial grass that's out there, so. You know, all those things need to be planned, but I think as, as Supervisor Miletta says, until we have a strategic plan in place, it, you know, it's kind of premature on us to say, you know, go do this, so. You know, hopefully here, I know your, your hands are full with budget, but you know, maybe sometime in the next few months, we can strategize or, uh, meet with someone. I know we're gonna have a joint meeting with the city. An opportunity to po, partner for maybe some, some cost sharing savings or, or, or investment. So, um, but until we have it, we, you know, it's just kind of throwing darts in the dark, so. Jesus?
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you for the comments. So just based on what, you know, the comments we have from you guys today, uh, I, I think we'll, we'll work on bringing something to the board for approval, so we could start uh, do a master plan and see what kind of a, you know. plan and see what kind of a, you know, what the scope looks like so that, you know, people could, so that you could get the product that you're looking for.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Great, thank you. Uh, since it is a study session, any comments from our?
Excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Valdez, do you need to have a board motion to, to direct you to do a master plan for parks at this time?
I, I think it's a study session, so.
There's no action item.
Yeah, we didn't have an action.
Action item on the agenda?
No. And so, it is a study session, so any member of the public that's here that would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Chair, Jerry Navarro, Rio Rico resident, president of the Bella Vista Homeowners Association. Uh, I think we can at least try and get a group of concerned citizens or a group together to plan this out. Uh, I do know that, having been a past president of the Rio Rico Little League and, uh, been involved in my community quite extensively in the past years as a coach, as a, uh, umpire, uh, I think that if we, and it won't cost us anything to get this, these people together and help out the county to see what we can do about this, for, look for a location and, and look up at grants and anything we can do as a community to help us get this project off the ground. And I know it's expensive. Uh, having been the Little League president, I know how much it costs, but, uh, we need to put this kind of emphasis on our community if we want the quality of life in our community to grow good. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and you know, probably, go ahead, are you gonna say something, Kathy? While you go up there is, here's an opportunity to have maybe some little public meetings out in the various areas and invite the public, uh, to give their input and, and bring it into the fold. Kathy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Vice Chair and members of the board. Again, I'm asking, we need a park in northeast Rio Rico. There is a tremendous number of buildings going in. There are a tremendous number of, um, the Chicanos Parla Casa homes going up there. Uh, those people need a neighborhood park for their kids. Um, one of the people that I represented in real estate, um, moved to Sarita because, um, they didn't have a park where his child could go for playtime or, were they playdates? They didn't have them when I was a kid, so. But I, we do need a neighborhood park up there. Calabasas Park is, um, what, ten, twelve miles away? Uh, something in northeast Rio Rico would be very helpful. I would be more than happy to sit on a committee to help determine what all the needs are, but those are things that need to be done regionally. Every, every community needs to have some input for what their particular needs are. So.
Right.
I don't wanna harp on it, but I'll be back.
You're gonna do an Arnold Schwarzenegger, Antamina. Um, you know, great suggestions, uh, but I think we also need to look at the developers, and I don't know what's in our comprehensive plan or zoning to be able to identify maybe pieces of property where, I know Chairman Bracker has been pushing for little pocket, uh, pocket parks, uh, which, you know, they are necessary, uh, you know. I think I'm old school, uh, we didn't have all these comput- (cough) Excuse me? Computer games when we were growing up. We were outside playing ball and running and doing a lot of things, and I think we need to make sure that some of those amenities are available to, to the, to the kids so that they're able to play. And so, um, you know, here's an opportunity, Jesus, to really start building on it, and I know that we will probably get a lot of input. It'll look very expensive, but I think at the end of the day, if we can find ways of, of phasing it in, you know, how much can we do, uh, in-house with our own workforce? What are we looking at the creation of Ramadas or, or playground equipment? What are we looking at for the cost to, to, uh, get irrigation systems in for the ball fields or the soccer fields? Uh, you know, some of those things that, that are expensive, uh, to put in, and then of course, once they're in, you have to maintain them, so. Anything else, any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Valdez, Deputy County Manager, Senior County Manager Valdez, to come back to us with a, uh, proposal for a, uh, master, creating a master plan so that the board can approve and move this, move this forward. So, um, I know when you create master plans, there are components with public engagement and there are public boards that, that are part of that, so I think it takes care of what both, uh, we heard from both the constituents that spoke this morning. Um, so, Mr. Valdez, that's what I would like to see from you.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
If not, then at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our study session, convene regular meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. We are reconvening to our regular session, and at this time, we will go to item G. Executive Sessions, uh, Cheryl entertain a motion to convene into, and I will read this executive session. One pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, A three, discussion consultation for legal advice regarding recent case law developments, Maro versus Cochise, Supervisors versus, is it Cherviz? Chervi, Chervis?
Chervis.
And Kavanaugh. Number two pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, A three, discussion and consultation for legal advice regarding permit and regulation enforcement under ARS thirty-six, one oh one, two, one oh two, and one thirty-six at all, that's, and the third one is pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, A three, discussion consultation for legal advice regarding recent developments in USA versus Felipe Fuentes, AZDCT case number twenty-two CR zero eight two four, USA versus Flores at all, AZDCL case number twenty-two CR zero eight twenty, so.
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, and we will now convene into executive session. We'll ask everyone to please leave the room. At this time, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session and reconvene regular meeting. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Move to adjourn.
That's right, we're going to item number, number K, so adjournment. There's a motion to hear a second. Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We stand adjourned.